Welcome to the regular meeting of council of August the 13th, 2019. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda, we'll have a minor change.
It's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approves the agenda for the regular meeting held August 13th, 2019, with item number 12, additional information, being brought forward and dealt with prior to item 6.1.
All in favor? Approved, unanimous? Petitions and delegations? Sorry, is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? Sorry. Second quarter, is it? No, I wouldn't have one because that affects me the same as everybody else from town, right? Okay, thank you. None declared? Petitions and delegations? None noted?
It's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves the minutes of the following meetings. The special public meeting held July 16th, 2019, the regular meeting of council held July 16th, 2019, and the Kirkland Lake Police Services Board held July 29th, 2019.
Councillor White?
Sorry, just before we vote, could we have a ver- though I know it was on the radio and it has been reported to the public already, could we just have a verbal report of how the discussion went for the request for children playing signs during that meeting?
Yeah.
Councillor Owen?
I chaired that meeting because the mayor was out of town. What the Police Services Board decided and what the acting staff sergeant suggested was that they OPP conduct a focused, focused patrol there to, and conduct a speed study. And then that would give us information to move forward on as to whether or not council wants to put signs up or whether or not the police department would recommend it. I was in that neighborhood today and I did observe a basketball game going on in the street, which is not proper but often done. But I don't, like, I don't think if, if that's the reason they want the speed limit changed so they can have a basketball game on the street, well, Saint Jerome School's not that far away and they could go there, the kids could go there to play. As well, the staff sergeant reported on the focused patrol that they did on Second Street. And the, the speed study they did there, the fastest car they clocked on Second Street was four kilometers below the speed limit, which was a surprise to everybody, but that's an update on, on the other focused. So I think that should answer the question.
Thank you, councillor Owen. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, I want to speak on behalf of council and staff of the town of Kirkland Lake on the water bill, sewer bill shock. By now, most residents have received their water and sewage treatment billings. The billing includes retroactive payments required to cover January 1st, 2019 to June The January 1st to April 1st billings noted that there would be an adjustment when council approved the budget. This was a one-time catch-up billing and future billings will be on a timely quarterly basis. Our normal practice was that the rates were set in October or November so that the January billings would commence immediately and no adjustments during the year. So what changed this? There were a number of factors. The existing water sewer study left many challenges of the assumptions used, which barely accounted for capital reserve to replace and maintain equipment for our treatment plants at present and in the, at the end of their life cycle. The water treatment plant, for example, is 40 years old, so ongoing maintenance and improvements will extend its life possibly another 15 to 20 years. The province has mandated that the municipality set reserve funds aside for replacement. We will not see $35 million granted to the municipality like we received for the collapse of the sewage treatment plant. We are using the same methodology for calculating water rates as most municipalities in Northern Ontario. We are struggling with the fairness of this methodology's use and are researching ways, different ways to make it more equitable. Water meters, they're not the answer. In fact, substantially driven up costs in some other Northern Ontario communities such as North Bay where the cost of meters were four and a half million dollars and the taxpayer ended up having to pay higher water rates. We are mandated by the province to collect the full operating costs and replacement costs of our water and sewer treatment plants under our asset management plan. Otherwise, the province will reduce funding to the municipality. Therefore, we cannot just look at collecting this year's costs. We must look, move forward to at least the next 20 years for future costs and replacement. We've been reassessing the plan, however, we need a new study that accurately reflects our present and future needs. Newly elected councillors, council members were elected to put the financial needs and infrastructure needs in place for the community. We knew that there would be some difficult and unpopular decisions to be made, however, the future of our town is at stake and changes have to be made. Many of these changes are short-term changes for long-term gain. I would also ask residents to take, not to take out their frustrations, on the front-line staff, there have been instances of individuals swearing and yelling at staff, which is unacceptable. Example, staff answering the phone or, or accepting payments should not be subject to this type of behavior. If you have a concern, contact council, council members or senior staff member to address these issues. We thank you for your patience and understanding. The communication process, I think we, we could, we could have improved. We can always improve anything that we do. We have printed up, I think there were handouts here for the explanation on how the, the rates were, how will affect you and how they're calculated. Also, there was a question from councillor Stacey White with respect to council's ability to retroactively go back and charge from January 1st to June 30th for the, for these billings. Under the municipal act, we are allowed to do that. We, we do this with the tax bill because the first bill that goes out is actually 50% of what the previous year's tax is. And then when the tax rates are set and the budget completed, then we send the adjustment billings out for the rest of the year. So I appreciate this concern for the community. It's going to put some hardship on some people, we understand that, but we have to start implementing changes now or down the road we will be in further trouble. Thank you. Reports of municipal officers and communications. We welcome Lloyd Crocker from Grant Thornton for presentation on the 2018 draft audit statements.
On page five, under consolidated entities, Museum of Northern History Advisory Committee is listed there. What financial statements do they have?
They have all the, 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 the,[1222.66] our treasurer and deputy treasurer did this year, going through the 2018 transactions, it did take a lot of time, but it was well worth the effort and gave us correct information to start the 2019 budget, even though it delayed it. It was well worth it, and I think we have a better method of working towards future budgets. So I want to thank, on behalf of council, want to thank the treasurer and the deputy treasurer for the work that they did on this and your audit as well. Good to hear. Any further comments or questions? Lloyd? Thank you. So we're coming back. Oh, Sherry is next, sorry.
So, thank you to Lloyd for attending. And having been on the other side, I know how dry that is to present. So, as far as the consolidated statements, I know there's a big agenda tonight. I've made some notes. I'll go through them quickly, and then if anybody has questions, we can go from there. As Lloyd mentioned, you have two statements tonight. You have the draft consolidated financial statements of the town as a whole, and you also have the trust fund statements. As far as the consolidated and the trust fund statements, they were, under the municipal act, we are required to put them on the, to publish them within 60 days of getting the auditor's report. So we will do that once they're finalized. They will be on the town's website. As far as the consolidated financial statements, they reflect the assets, the liabilities, the revenues, and the expenses of the town, which include, as we were talking about, it's the library, the museum, tech pioneer residence, and the 100th anniversary committee. I did want to mention, though, it does not include the school boards. I know the town, we collect the school taxes, but the operations of school boards are not included in our statements. The other thing I wanted to mention is that it's important to note that the results that are presented in your financial statements are not prepared on the same basis as your budget. And that will actually go to the second report that Treasury has on tonight. It's the, this regulation. So what happens is, you do your budget on a cash basis. The financial statements are based on public sector accounting board standards, which are, you'll hear us call it PSAB, just for short. So, quickly, the, sorry, to go back one, the consolidated, so you're looking at your operating, your capital, your water, and your wastewater. They're all in here, even though we do separate budgets. As far as the consolidated financial statement, they're all in as one. Some of the things, the differences between PSAB and the cash basis, just to give you an idea, as far as PSAB, what happens is, for PSAB, you exclude the following items. So it's the debt principal repayments, the transfers to and from the reserve and reserve funds, your debenture proceeds, and capital expenditures. And so then the flip side of that is, things that are included in PSAB, but you exclude them for your budget, is accrual for employee future benefits, landfill, post-closure costs, and tangible capital assets. And like I say, this will become more clear when we get to the second report. So the consolidated financial statements, it's a long document. It's 27 pages in total. There's four statements. There's notes to the financial statements, and there's various supporting schedules. And so I'm just going to go through them, as I say, very briefly. As far as statement one, that is your consolidated statement of financial position. Most people would think of it as your balance sheet. As far as the change in the cash and cash equivalents, if you were to refer to statement four, which is on page four, that will actually break out the difference between last year's cash ending balance and this year. So it shows you the inflows and the outflows. You'll notice there was a decrease in the accounts receivable. That's mainly due to the fact that last year there were several projects in progress that were funded by provincial and federal governments. There weren't as many this year, so the receivable has decreased. You'll notice the temporary loan last year was a large balance, and now it's just a minimal. That is because the pool last year was still in progress. In 2018, it was debentured. So if you look down to the long-term debt, you'll notice that number has increased correspondingly. As far as accounts payable and accrued liabilities, once again, those have gone down as well because it reflects the same idea as the accounts receivable, fewer projects in progress, which means fewer outstanding invoices at year end. As far as the deferred revenue, if you were to refer to schedule three on page 22, it will give you an outline of what went in and what went out for deferred revenue. As far as the post-employment benefits and compensated absences, that's based on an actuarial evaluation. And if you refer to the notes to the financial statements, there's several places that provides more detail. As far as the long-term debt, there's a schedule four on page 23, and once again, it provides a breakdown. For the tangible capital assets, if you look at schedule five on page 24, there's a breakdown of that as well. And the accumulated surplus, if you refer to schedule one on page 20, there's a breakdown of that. As far as statement two, it's the consolidated statement of operations, or most people would know it as the income statement. Municipal taxation, that includes not only your, the levy that the town has, it also would include items such as supplementaries that come in during the year. Taxation from other governments, another name for that would be your payments in lieu. Those are basically federal and provincial ministries that have properties in town, and that's how we get our taxation from them. It's through a payments in loop system. As far as user charges and other revenues, you could refer to schedule two on page 21 for a breakdown. There are Government of Canada and Province of Ontario grants. They're operating and capital grants included, and the reference to the nonspecific, that would be the OMPF. As far as the surplus, I wanted to just spend a few minutes on that. So the surplus on the statement is, I believe it's one, around 1.3 million. That doesn't necessarily reflect the performance. So what I'll try and explain is, if you were to flip to statement three on page three, which is the consolidated statement of change in net debt, that's probably the best indicator as to why you're looking at a surplus of 1.3. Because under PSAB, and actually what you'll see there is, so as far as statement two, it includes an amortization amount of almost $4 million. What it doesn't include is your acquisition of your tangible capital assets for the year, which is 4.7. So, like I say, you're seeing an expense of 3.9, but in actuality, when you budget, you budget it for 4.7. That's the, not discrepancy, but the difference between PSAB and the way you're budgeting. So you might have a 1.3 million surplus on this statement, but that's not the way you budget. And that also goes to a few weeks back, or a few meetings back, when I presented the report about the surplus. It was 400 and some thousand. That's because the 400 and some thousand dollar surplus is based on, is calculated using how you budget. It's not based on PSAB, because you're not bringing, or you're not levying dollars based on PSAB. You're levying it based on the cash basis. So, like I say, just to be clear, that's why you're looking at a surplus of 1.3 on PSAB, but that's not the surplus that was reported as the 400 and some thousand for that reason. So, as far as some of the variances that you'll notice on statement two, between the 2018 actual and the 2018 budget, most of those are as a result of the amortization. So just for an example, if you look at the environmental services, you'll see that the actual was 5.8, and the budget was 4.8. Sorry, I can't read it from here. Sorry, the actual was 6.8, and then the budget was 4.8. That $2 million difference, it's the amortization. So once again, you don't budget for it, but it's in the actual columns. So as far as the notes to the financial statements, they start on page five and they run to page 19. Some of the ones that you may find of interest, just to give you an idea of how the statement is prepared, your significant accounting policies are note two. Commitments are outlined in note 11. Related entities are outlined in note 12. And note 16 might also be of interest, because what it does is it breaks down the expenses by object, as opposed to statement two, which breaks it down by function. And part of that is you'll see the similarities between the financial information return. As far as schedule one, which is on page 20, it provides a breakdown of the accumulated surplus, which is basically your reserves, your reserve funds, and your surpluses, which funded and unfunded. So as I say, I very quickly went through all of that, because I know it's dry. But if there's any questions on that, I would rather deal with that, as opposed to me rambling on about all of what's in there, all 27 pages of it. So.
We have a resolution?
It's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council was presented with the draft 2018 audited financial statements at its regular meeting held August 13, 2019, and that council accepts and approves the consolidated financial statements of the municipal corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake for the year ended December 31, 2018, and the trust fund balance sheet and statement of continuity of the municipal corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake and its affiliate boards for the year ended December 31, 2018, and that council authorizes the treasurer to distribute the audited statements as required by the municipal.
All in favor? unanimous?
Okay, so I'll go on to the next one. Basically, once again, this is a legislative requirement. It's Ontario Regulation 28409. Basically, this is saying that it allows a, we bring the report and have it approved with a resolution to say that we've reconciled between the PSAB format and the cash budgeting format. So just to give you a brief history on it, it was in 2009 that PSAB started, that was introduced. And the major revision in that is the fact that now you see tangible capital assets on the balance sheet. If you were to look back to a financial statement back in the 80s, probably, it was like an 11 by 17 statement about this wide, and it had all your capital expenditures and everything on there. So they were expensed in the year that you bought them, as opposed to capitalizing them and amortizing. That's the main difference. So budgets are not required to be prepared on the PSAB basis. So the town of Kirkland Lake, like most municipalities, we are still using the old method, which is a cash-based budget method. But as I say, the financial statements are required to be in PSAB. The Ontario Regulation 28409 allows a municipality to exclude the following expenses from the budget, which is the amortization, the post-employment benefits, and the solid wastelandfill closure and post-closure. And so, as I say, when these were excluded, the regulation requires that a report about the excluded expenses must be adopted by a resolution. So while the above expenses are excluded from the budget, but included for PSAB, there are other expenses that we exclude in PSAB, but you do include for your budget, as we kind of touched on. It's the tangible capital asset acquisitions, the long-term debt principal repayments, proceeds of long-term debt, and transfers to and from the reserve and reserve funds. If you refer to appendix A, that's the reconciliation between PSAB and the cash budget for 2019, and the effect that these differences would have on the annual surplus. And once again, I caution, that's, it's a surplus, but it's because you're looking at this whole amortization expense versus how much you spent on your acquisition of capital assets in a year. As far as the amortization, a few points. The amount that you'll see here, it's estimated, using the existing assets, plus what you plan on buying from your, according to the 2019 capital budget. Just to note, if you have large items that are work in progress, for example, the pool, the pool does not get amortized until it is put into use. So 2018 was the first time it was amortized. While it's being built, it's not amortized. As I say, this is an estimate for the amortization. Once we get to year end, the actual will be calculated. As far as the post-employment benefits expense, that, the balance at December 31, 2018, was just over 4 million. Just to let you know, that is determined based on an actuarial evaluation. The town engages an actuary to prepare that calculation, and it's usually done every three years, and 2019 will require another one. And basically, the idea is that you're accruing over the life of the employee. As they're, as they provide service to the town, that's when the accrual should occur, not when they actually retire. But PSAB does not require that to be fully funded. And once again, the estimate that's in there is based on 2018, because the 2019 actuary evaluation has not been done yet. As far as the solid wastelandfill closure and post-closure, the balance at December 31 was 300, just over 346,000. It's based on a calculation that we do each year. It's based on various assumptions that are related to what it actually works out to be 61 years, because it's, the estimate is that our, ours will close in 2050, and then after 2050, the post-closure is another 30 years. So it's 61-year estimate. Once again, PSAB does not require the liability to be fully funded, and the assumptions, we will look at them again at year end, and if there's a change to the liability required, we will calculate that. The tangible capital assets are not expensed. They are capitalized on the balance sheet. They're amortized over the useful life in accordance with the town's TCA policy. And the budget amount for acquisition, tangible capital asset acquisitions for 19 is almost 4.9 million. As far as the long-term debt repayments, that's not an expense. The only expense under PSAB is the interest. The principal repayments reduce the liability that's on the balance sheet, and we're estimating that for 2019 to be, 19 to be over a million and three. As far as the proceeds of long-term debt, once again, back, way back, it used to be recorded as revenue. Now it's not revenue. It'll show up as a liability on the balance sheet. And we're estimating 387,000 for the proceeds for 2018, or 2019, sorry. Transfers to and from the reserve and reserve funds, it's almost a wash. It's 1.6 either way, money going in to the reserve and reserve funds, and money coming out of the reserve and reserve funds. And one of the other parts of the regulation, it requires us to look at the impact on future TCA funding requirements. So what it's saying is, the tangible capital asset amortization is also an indicator of the amount that you should be contributing towards replacement of existing infrastructure. But the important thing to note is, when you're amortizing assets, you're basing them on historical cost. But when you have to replace them, you're going to be replacing them at current cost. So there is a discrepancy there as well. And just the other thing to mention, too, is that once a capital asset management plan is in place, that should assist in us determining the adequacy of the lifecycle requirements for the town. So once again, sorry, very quickly, but that's, that's a requirement for the legislative.
Any comments or questions?
Sherry, I think it's safe to say, between you and Peter, that you revamped our accounting system to be more transparent and easier to understand for both council and, and the public. And it's going to make the budget process a heck of a lot easier and less time-consuming than what we've gone through this year. So I know there was a lot of extra work, time, and effort, certainly appreciated by council, and in the long term, what's best for the community. So, thank you, and Peter, for the, your extra efforts.
And it's a work in progress, because it should also be conducive to what council needs, but also for what staff needs, too, for them to be able to do what they need to do.
We have come a long way in one year. Thank you.
Councillor Owens?
Yeah, Sherry, I just want to say, my knowledge of accounting comes down to, either I have the money in the bank to buy something, or I don't. So, you know, as you're spearing off all these figures and everything, I know I'm supposed to be a wise councillor and understand, but I don't understand accounting. But with you, as the treasurer, and Peter, as the deputy treasurer, I have no doubt in my mind that the books have been completed in a proper and legal manner, and that everything that is in these statements is as honest as it can be. And I think the rest of the residents of Kirkland Lake should have the same assurance, whether they, like me, don't understand accounting. And the other thing, too, I know I've come to see you once or twice, and you give me very quick, down-to-earth answers that I can understand. So I, I, I think that, you know, if residents don't understand, I think you would be open to explaining to them exactly, in English, what it all means. But anyways, thanks very much, Sherry. I can sleep tonight, knowing the books are done properly.
It's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves and adopts the report prepared by the interim town treasurer, addressing the financial disclosure requirements under Ontario Regulation 28409.
All in favor? unanimous? CAO?
I can't possibly beat what Sherry just did, so it's going to be a lot, a lot simpler. The first item is a amendment to the public notice by law on purchasing material management policy. As we were going through the budget process, council did request that we tried to control costs. One area that was identified was the use of print media. We have, as we explained to council at that time, we do have certain stipulations within some of our policies as to how we have to advertise. These are amendments to those policies to allow us to use, to rely on social media more. It does give, each policy, as it's written, does give us a flexibility to move back and forth, as well as some grounds for future development, say, what happens with the media in town. There will still be some print advertisements that must be put out. As well, we made a commitment to council that, when you do see an advertisement going into the paper, where possible, we will try to maximize the benefit from that advertisement to the municipality. That means that instead of one advertisement, if we can put a mini municipal update in advising people of other events or activities in town, we will do so, to try to maximize the value that we get from each particular posting.
Any questions? Councillor Adams?
So what will be the cost of doing the printing and posting them at all of our businesses? Sorry, the pool, the complex, medium?
It's fairly minimal. I think at the complex, which is the printer that we use the most, I think it's about .02 cents for a page. And it's usually one, one page being put up at any one time.
Councillor Adams?
So a lot of seniors do rely on that newspaper, though, as a way of communication. So to expect them to go out to these areas, as well as to use social media. I still think it's a benefit to almost have that, but I understand the financial cost of it. I would be in favor of going ahead with this, only if it's on an interim basis of like six months, as long as we get feedback from our senior population that are always involved, to see if they enjoy that.
This was a concern that we've had from the get-go as well, because we do know that many people do rely on the paper. The problem is that, of course, we can't quantify it, because we're not, we don't get accurate figures as to where the distribution is. I leave that to council's direction. Do you want to try it for an interim basis, or how? We have looked at other measures, direct mailouts, everything like that. It comes to the same thing. It's a bit of a hit and miss, once it gets into that system. I leave that at council's discretion to provide direction.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I, I understand that, that some people still read the paper and rely on it for advertisement. But at the same time, I think council was given a mandate to cut back on costs wherever we could. And so much of our budget is areas where we cannot cut back. We do not have a choice. Advertising, I don't know the figures that tipped my, my fingers right now, but I think we were up to 78,000. Was it, well, 68?
I don't have it. I think it was 68.
68,000, when we were doing the budget, and the year's not over. I think that's an area where we can cut back and save the taxpayer some money.
Councillor, just to clarify, the municipal update portion, I think it was at 14,000, I think it was?
Yeah.
13 or 14,000.
Yeah, which, to me, I, I'm not sure we're getting value out of. I'm in favor of going ahead with this full force, not on an interim basis. And if we get, you know, concerns voiced to us, then we can come back and revisit it and say, whoops, you know what? The taxpayers didn't like what we do, we did. We can look at other ways to save money. But I don't see any reason to go ahead on an interim basis from now. Go ahead with it the way we planned, and then if there's a lot of feedback that the people aren't getting the information they need, then revisit it.
Any further comments?
I tend to agree with councillor Owen. Let's give it another shot. If it doesn't work out, we can make those adjustments along the way. It's not, it's significant enough, but there's not too mu, too many ways to communicate in, in the media in Kirkland Lake, in all honesty. That's not a shot at anybody, but it's a fact, without getting into major, major expenses. Any further comments? Questions? Just a moment.
So it's moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council directs staff to proceed with moving the municipal update to be available in municipal facilities in place of regular newspaper publishing.
All in favor? Anybody ruling against? One noted? Approved? Thank you. CAO denied funding applications?
As we had explained to council during the budget process, we regularly submit applications. You don't always know if, when, how the decision-making process is done. Often, we only receive information or confirmation of funding much later in the year. This is what happened with these two, the Connecting Link and the Funding for Paving Main Street. We did receive letters that we have been denied. I don't know about Main Street paving, because I suspect that that was a one-time off from the province, but Connecting Link does come back. And I would ask that, if council considers meeting with the provincial government, that that would be one of the positions it takes rather strongly, is that we do need far more reliability in their infrastructure support. Something like the Connecting Link is something you plan for. You try not to touch with your own dollars, simply because it is part of a provincial infrastructure network. And then when it doesn't come through, it impacts heavily on the community. Last time we were denied, there was funding that came forward at the end of the year that we were able to take advantage of. If that happens, we'll certainly bring that forward to council. But at this point, these two projects are off the capital list. They are funded by direct government grants, as well as gas tax, so there is no impact on the levy dollars. And the dollars themselves that were allocated under gas tax will remain in the budget for council to determine what to do at the end of the year.
Comments? Councillor Perrier?
Excuse me, I just wanted to explain-
Excuse me, I just wanted to explain why they, why they just flat out say no.
Just no. It's said nicely, but it's no.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Is it fair to say, and, I mean, this is a crapshoot, but usually if you get turned down one year, you have a better chance the next year?
In a normal circumstance, I would say so. In this circumstance, I'm not sure, because the government has been offering one-time pots of money, and I think that that has come out of somewhere. And in the future, we don't know what their direction is in terms of allocation of funds under OMPF, under infrastructure or anything else. So, it's a bit more worrisome this time around.
Yeah, I agree.
The hundred and twenty thousand that was set aside through gas tax, that money will be put in reserve?
That money will remain in the capital budget until we get to the end of the year, at which point council will make its decision as to where that goes. It remains as gas tax money with criteria that, for its use in the future. Thank you.
It's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council accepts the report on denied funding applications for Main Street paving and 2019 Connecting Link. And council approves that the projects be removed from the 2019 capital budget, and the gas tax portion of the proposed projects be re-entered into the gas tax obligatory reserve fund.
All in favor? Approved, unanimous?
The report that I provided to council details the contract cost with Aqua for the services that they provide. It indicates that the contract is coming up, and there are options as to move forward. Staff is recommending that council go with a two-year extension of the contract, the reasoning being, as is said on the second page, the two-year period gives the town the time needed to complete and implement a strategic review. And I think that that will have some commentary on the relationship with Aqua. Also, a two-year period may see the entry of new players into the service field. That could be to the town's benefit. The public was invited to a presentation by Epcore a few months ago. That is one such player. Also, a two-year period would allow us to explore some cost-saving options, both with Aqua and on our own, both administrative procedures, as well as purchase of materials, I'm thinking chemicals on that. We'd be bringing that back for council's consideration. There are other options. We could negotiate a new contract with Aqua. That is the preference for most municipalities. We could go to an RFP. That's something that we're not really ready for right now, and it's something that we would have to budget for in the 2020 process, budget process. Or we could try to bring the service back internally. That is something that we recommend against, because we simply don't have the people, knowledge and equipment. Would take us time to get up to that point. So, our recommendation again, in light of the fact that a strategic review is being done, is for a two-year extension.
Just one comment I do have. I know the previous Aqua contract was rushed in, in the last council, I think in the first month of our election, and it appeared to be a done deal by the existing councillors. So, it never really did go out for RFP. I do have a lot of faith in Aqua, and I think under the circumstances, they've got us through some very difficult times. They've done a good job. Pricing, as far as we know, has been fair. And I think perhaps a strategic review will outline some other avenues that we should be looking at. So, I do support the two-year renewal. At that time, I'm hoping we do go for another RFP, if that's the decision of council. Any other comments? Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I won't favor the two-year extension, but I'm letting people know now that at the end of that two years, I'm going to be pushing hard for it to go out for a request for proposal, which I believe is a responsible thing to do for the ratepayers with a contract this large. Yes, there are circumstances right now where I don't think it's in the ratepayers' best interest to go to an RFP. I don't think we're prepared to do that in, for a number of reasons. But in two years' time, we will be ready, and I will be pushing hard, because there's no way that a contract this, this size should just be handed over, because the company's already there, no matter how good they are. And so, that's just, two years' notice, I'll be back.
Very fair comments, councillor Owen. I, I agree with you. Any other comments? Questions? It'll come back as a bylaw.
Heritage North?
Scott, if you could join us, please? I'm asking Scott McDowell to join us as the administrator for Heritage North. He can speak more to the day-to-day realities. The issue itself was brought forward in, sorry, May fourteenth, when the Hockey Heritage North Foundation came forward with a request to mount the brass faceplates. You didn't think to bring one, did you?
No.
No, there's a picture in there. They're about this big, and I think you said about two pounds or something like that, four pounds. They were in the great hall on a slightly angled table, and the idea was that people would take wax paper, put it on, do an etching of the, I think, of the faces. The original intent, I think, was to keep it updated. The, when the facility was converted, I think there were roughly three hundred and sixty-eight they were taken out to replace into storage. Foundation would, at that point, did approach the previous mayor and ask if they could mount them somewhere, and he had suggested that, they had suggested the theatre, he suggested perhaps it was a good idea. It had never been brought to council, and thus it came back here. The directions from council were to look at, to make a comment on mounting the plaques in the theatre, as well as to put other options forward. We've done that in the report. Our basic finding really is, the memorabilia, the collection, it does not contribute to your business at, as a convention centre. The items that are up there now, the display cases, the diorama, are covered. They're, they were only taken down for the Holy Irish event, and beyond that, most people come in, they don't want them there, because they're decorating the facility for its purposes. Walk-in traffic, there is none, because you don't know. If the person is renting the room, obviously, you're not going to let people just wander through. I, I understand that the question is with the faceplates. I think the greater question to council is, what do you wish to do with this hockey collection? It's an uncomfortable question, because there's a lot of heart and soul that went into that, but the facility, as it's reported in the, in the report, performs better as it is now, and there's options even to make it better otherwise. I'm thinking particularly if you remove the diorama, I think Scott said there's about eight hundred square feet of additional space, turn it into a bar, whichever. But that's not for us to say, that's for council to direct. Our question to council is, what do you want to do with the collection? What would you like us to find out for you, to help you make a decision? And secondly, with the, the faceplaques, that we, we suggest to council you defer that until you make a decision what to do with the collection as a, as a whole.
Councillor White?
I'm not in favor of any further alterations to Hockey Heritage North until September, when we receive our review. This building and the services it currently provides is discretionary. And until which time the council decides what we are going to use this facility for, or whether we're going to continue using this facility, it would be very unwise to do any sort of alterations to the building itself, and to dump more money into this facility. I would like to see this opportunity to marry the history of the Heritage, Hockey Heritage North Foundation with the current users of the complex. I think it's a good way to marry the things from the past to our future possible, you know, hockey players of the future. As far as the entire collection, I believe we should start seriously looking at decommissioning most, if not all, of the artifacts. Allow the foundation, yourself and museum staff, to pick appropriate pieces that the town sees has value, and otherwise, decommission the rest of it.
I'd have to ask, sorry, Scott, I'd have to ask Bonnie to make any kind of commentary as to how it fits in with the complex. We did look at that before with the display cases. There were issues there with traffic in the hallways and that. I, I'd leave that, and we'd bring that back to council as well, because again, that's also a discretionary area, as is any recommendation to put anything in the museum. So, for the same reasons, defer.
But I do, I have to agree with councillor White. North Bay has their Hockey Hall of Fame in their arena, the Memorial Gardens, and we have that blue room that could accommodate some of the artifacts, but that decision's not going to be made tonight, but I think it's, it's a consideration that has to take place. I think the, the group itself has to decide the long-term future of what they're going to do with those artifacts, and after our organizational review, structural organizational review in September, we'll get some input from them, from, from that review, and then we can make those decisions. So, I think we have to pretty well defer anything until that time. And it'll give a chance for the, the group to get together and have some discussion as to where they're going with this.
I do have to, sorry, councillor, I do have to point out that under the takeover in 2008, council is responsible for the collection. It, it is your belongings, just so you know. That's all.
Well, they, let's face it, I think we owe some allegiance to these people. They did a lot of work. It was all done for the right reasons, but just, it didn't work out. Didn't work out for the Shania Twain Centre in Timmins as well, and sometimes you just have to move on. Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I, I agree with Stacey. I traveled a lot in southern Ontario when I was playing hockey, and I traveled probably even more with my son and daughter playing hockey in northern Ontario. And most arenas that I've gone into have had some sort of collection highlighting the figure skaters that have gone on to significant achievements, the hockey players that have gone on to significant achievements, the ringette players that have gone on to significant achievements. And to me, this type of material should be at the complex. That's a natural fit. It's what other communities do, and it's a matter of having the political will to do that. I also agree with the mayor in that I think we should not leave, even though it is our collection, I certainly do not believe we should leave the original foundation out of the decision-making and, and process of decommissioning the collection or cutting it down. They did do a huge service to the community with, with the idea of improving the, the community, making Kirkland Lake better. Unfortunately, it didn't work out the way everybody had hoped. So, I think it would be a slap in the face, even though technically we own it, we just say, okay, we're gonna deal with getting rid of it in, in the way that, in a manner that we feel fit. I think we should honor these volunteers by involving them in the process. I think there's definitely, the plaques should go on the walls at the complex. If things have to be rearranged, they have to be rearranged, you know? But that's what we're here for, to make the decisions.
Councillor Avanoff?
Yeah, I also agree we should wait till we do our strategic review and have a look at what we're going to be doing with the, with Heritage North before we put in the effort. I hate to see somebody wasting all that time and effort to put a whole bunch of plaques up and then find out that some decision that council has made has changed that. So, it's just, I think it's a waste of effort if we do it now and decide to change our focus somewhere down the road.
Thank you. Councillor Perrier?
I also have to think that a lot of this memorabilia is loaned from people, and that has to be taken into consideration as well.
I believe you're correct.
Thank you.
So, do we agree to defer any decisions until after the organizational review as well? I think that makes a lot of sense. Scott?
Okay. Is that it?
Yep. Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Joanna?
Okay, so, we do have a policy that does state that any out-of-district resolutions that we receive are actually sent around to council, and council decides whether or not they want to bring them to, to council to discuss. So, the next three items, the Stratford, Halton Hills and McKellar, are those resolutions. And I don't know, I know that it was councillors Stacey White and also councillor Patrick Adams. I don't know if you wanted to discuss this, or just?
Oh, I know this one.
This one? Okay.
The budget planning? No? Okay. So, I believe it's imperative that northern municipalities have a voice when it comes to any political act that will undoubtedly impact our future budget and ability to plan at the local level. That's why I would like to add our municipality to this resolution. I don't know if Ashley has a feeling on that, or? OMB, yes.
Okay. They're wanting it back to the OMB.
This would be the province of Ontario that is, is changing that.
My understanding was that the OMB changed back to the ALPA. I'll have to look into it, Stacey. OMB changed to ALPA with the last update. The intent of ALPA, when they started implementing it, started taking on the same roles as the OMB, and it sort of made a lot of people angry, because the whole purpose of ALPA was to have a whole new mandate on how they deal with cases. I'll have to look into it switching back. I'm not up to speed on that one. Yeah. Okay.
Ashley, is it fair to, or what you're feeling about the, we have gone through one ALPA decision. Do you feel it was effective by having a local, more local input as opposed to the Ontario Municipal Board?
I believe it was the same as dealing with OMB.
No significant difference?
No. The, the intent was that the, the chair is supposed to take on a more local approach to dealing with it and make decisions and take into consideration the decisions that council would have made. They ended up going against council's decision and proved it. So, I think it's, it's very similar, that the process was very similar with the OMB. I dealt, I dealt with one of those probably about seven years ago, and ALPA was very, it was a very similar decision-making process.
Yeah, it, it sounded good when they first announced that the ALPA would be the decision, final decision-maker, but hasn't seemed to have had much effect or any improvement in the turnaround, well, possibly in the turnaround time for, for meetings. But other than that, I haven't seen any positive effect.
Yeah. They are going to be working on updating the provincial policy statement as well. I'm actually heading to a conference in October to get all up to speed with what's happening with the province and?
Yeah. It's rather unfortunate, too, that the province made these changes, and then, less than a year, now they want to go back to?
Yeah, and that, that's where I want to take a look at it. I'm not, I'm not quite sure. I haven't heard anything about ALPA going back to OMB, so I'll take a look at it and report back. report back.
I have, to defer this resolution?
Yeah, I agree.
Is that okay with everyone?
Everybody in agreement on that, deferring that? I think we do need some consultation, uh, with the province on this for sure.
Okay, so the next resolution that came in, and I do believe it was councillor Adams who spoke about this, this is Halton Hills, and, uh, petition to the Ministry, Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks concerning reducing litter and waste.
Yeah, so what they're pretty much looking for is, uh, similar to other provinces in Canada, including, we've been in discussion with Colombia, including, uh, Quebec as well, is that, uh, there's a great paper that I've read and read that's on online, reducing litter and waste in their communities, where it is proven that, uh, having incentive programs for, uh, deposit returns on plastics being returned back is a great system to help affect the, uh, plastic removal of the stuff that, uh, is going to fill them up.
And it's a pretty easy way to just help divert. So I think they're on the right path and just have, asking the province to, uh, review that. And, uh, I would be in support of that.
Uh, question for Ashley. I don't, uh, know if this is the correct number, but wasn't there a bill one fifty-one to do with, uh, recycling? Did that ever get passed? It seemed to drag on and on and on.
Uh, Rick, can you come up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right. The implementation of it, uh, I'll let you expand on that.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's the Circular Economy Act, basically, and what, what, what they're gonna be doing and they're hoping by twenty twenty-five. And a page came out the other day from the minister saying, you know, thirty percent of recycling is in the landfills. He's true. He's right. Um, that's all to do with contamination and, and, uh, um, participation levels, if you will. And, uh, when that goes to a transfer station, there's always things that are in there that people shouldn't be putting in there, comes out, goes to a dump. But with this, the intent of this whole bill one fifty-one, Waste Free Ontario, it's a circular economy. So they, they basically want manufacturers to take full responsibility, producers take full responsibility of their products and of their packaging. So what that means for citizens and residents, you buy a bottle of water, the company that made that bottle has to take it back. You buy tires for your vehicles, the company that manufactured those tires have to take them back at the end of life. So by twenty twenty-five, they're hoping to have the, the whole blue box, curbside residential blue box thing figured out. They're still working it through. Um, that's gonna take the hook off all of us. It's gonna take the, the hook off the taxpayers. It's gonna take the hook off of, um, the, uh, commercial sector a little bit. I don't know what they can take back and what they shouldn't take back, 'cause the province has to deal with it with the producers. So they're ultimately gonna be responsible for all the garbage. And at the end of, I believe off the top of my head, I think in twenty fifty, you're gonna virtually have nothing going into your landfills. Brought back, refurbished, resold, continue on until you can't, then you make something new with it. That's the whole point of the circular economy. Just goes around in a circle.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, this system's been used in a number of European countries, um, especially ones with, uh, small land masses. And, uh, another benefit of this program is when the manufacturer's responsible for all the packaging, all of a sudden you don't get a slice of cheese that's packaged in three different layers of plastic, right? Uh, you don't get a TV that's, uh, packed in five layers of cardboard. Um, you don't open one plastic piece and then open a second plastic piece to get your tool out of, of, uh, package. And it's greatly, just from that point of view, greatly reduced it because all the costs of dealing with the packaging is a responsibility of the manufacturer. And, uh, hopefully we can get something similar here because it'd make a huge difference in the amount of packaging that's being used. Like, how many times you go to the store and you see stuff that's overpackaged, right? Because plastic's cheap and they've already got the equipment to shrink wrap it or whatever. And they think consumers like it. So...
I agree. And I think the, uh, the spin-off of that as well is that these, the manufacturers of these, uh, packaging or companies will come up with some, uh, genius ways of different packaging that's a lot, uh, gonna be a lot cheaper for them. Uh, that hasn't happened yet. Uh, we just keep producing plastics. So it will change, but two thousand and twenty-five seems like a long way off, that's for sure.
It is. There's a lot to, there's a lot to figure out. It's, uh, it's, it's not cut and dry. Every, every municipality will accept different recyclables, depending on the transfer stations where these recyclables go. Um, not every municipality can afford to send to Guelph. Guelph is the hub. Yep. It's, uh, it's the golden child of the province, right? Uh, so certain places like Timmins, Sudbury, North Bay, they'll accept single-stream recycling with certain limits. And there's no marketable value for that. There is no money, absolutely no money to be made on recycling right now. It costs money to get rid of it. There's no money to be made. Uh, when, when the markets, it's a global thing. So when the global markets are saturated, China decides, I'm not taking any more plastic. They're one of the big players. Then everybody has to stockpile plastic and it stockpiles. Big, big mountains of it because you can't get rid of it. So that's the whole intent of bill one fifty-one is to start making producers responsible for their stuff. Uh, maybe kick, you know, the human race into back a little bit. We're, we're kind of a throwaway society now. We, something breaks, we throw it away. These TVs, we receive umpteen amounts of TVs in our electronics being at the, at the landfill. Like, TVs are just insane. Uh, something break, it's throwaway. So it's taking you back in time a little bit when, you know, a wheel falls off a tricycle, you, you kind of fix it, put it back on, a little paint, there you go. That's where they wanna go with this. And the benefit of, uh, if, once it's all with the intent, I mean, changes of government, you never know, things can change. But the intent is to take the cost away from municipalities and taxpayers. Producers will also have to pay that portion of the contract for curbside collection. Now, we'll have options whether or not we wanna administer that contract. We can opt in, we can opt out. There, those are all things that are gonna come down the pipe when, when things become a little bit more clear and we'll come to council with that. But, um, as, as the framework is intended, that's, it's, it's gonna be at total, no cost to the municipality. So you'll have a savings there as well, eventually. Yeah. So anytime we, we have an opportunity to reduce waste, it's, it's a good thing.
So, thank you, Rick. Getting on with this resolution?
It's moved by councillor, uh, Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Stacy White. The council of the Town of Kirkland Lake supports the council, uh, council of Halton Hills in its position to the, in its petition to the province to review and implement a deposit return program for all single-use plastic, aluminum and metal drink containers. And it peti- and we petitioned that the province of Ontario review current producer requirements and look for extended producer responsibility for all packaging.
All in favor? Ananamous? Passed?
Okay, and the third resolution that came through is from the township of McKellar. And this has to do with, uh, the proposed or the, the threat of amalgamation brought on by the previous or the new government. Is that clear, Stacy?
Councillor White?
So this is another one that I brought. Um, there are several studies, um, proving that forced amalgamations does not do what the government promised it would. Um, it doesn't increase efficient or effective government, nor does it increase funds for the municipalities, nor does it decrease taxes. Um, I see a forced amalgamation as simply removing the burden of unorganized territories, especially in our area, uh, from the province and again downloading it to the municipalities. And it'll just increase the strain. Um, right now, we're not, uh, northern municipalities have not been announced as, there's been no rumors, but it's just a matter of time possibly.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I was, uh, living in Brampton when the forced amalgamation came, uh, through. And it came through on, with the promise of, uh, you know, everything was gonna be cheaper, you know? You don't have two administrations for the fire department, you only have one and, and all these synergies, I guess is the new word that's used. But in fact, what happened was, there were areas that were taken in on the amalgamation that were serviced by volunteer fire departments. Well, now they were part of the city of Brampton, they had to have professional firefighters. Um, costs didn't go down for the people of Brampton, costs went up. And I'm using firefighting just as an example because it's one for me to, easy to relate to. But that happened in, in a number of areas. Um, there was no saving in roads because now you've got hundreds of miles more roads to, to look after. And, uh, there was also, uh, while my mother would never accept Bramley as being part of Brampton, but there was also sort of old-time Brampton people, you know, didn't like the idea that they were forced to amalgamate.
Losing their entity.
Yeah. But it did not, as far as I could tell, when I was living down there, result in any cost savings whatsoever.
It, it's interesting that this is coming back into play because, uh, a year and a half ago, two years ago, when we were, had municipal affairs, uh, people up here and that topic came up and they said, you will never see it unless you have two willing parties. Uh, but the way the province is mandating things, it is possible. Councillor Adams, or, sorry, uh, Owens?
Um, I'm just, I think we're kinda jumping the gun on this one. I don't, since they're not talking about it, there's no mention of it for Northern Ontario. I think it'd be a bit premature, but that's my opinion on that.
Well, there's been a lot of, it's been rumors and hearsay about amalgamation in Northern Ontario. Uh, we have never heard anything, uh, official that even was under discussion. So it may be premature, as you say. Councillor Adams, please?
Yep. With this resolution, uh, something that really stands out is that they're asking the government to conduct an evidence-based study to show that amalgamation actually saves costs, jobs lowers taxes and reduce the provincial deficit, uh, just holds the government accountable to make sure that they'd make evidence-based, fact-based decisions. So I would be in support of this.
Any other comments, questions?
It's moved by councillor Dennis Perier, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. The council of the Town of Kirkland Lake supports the council of the township of McKellar in its petition to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario to ensure that proper investigation, research and consultation are completed prior to any municipal amalgamations.
All in favor? Declined? One noted?
Okay, so, we already have these two bylaws in place. It's the one for private property on, uh, Kirkland District Hospital and Northern College. And it allows our staff to write tickets out for offending parking, uh, car parks. And, uh, our, um, our previous bylaw officer no longer works for us and we now have the contractor. So what this is does is it's incorporating into the bylaw, taking out the bylaw enforcement officer and putting in tips or the, the contractor, the bylaw enforcement contractor. So there is a, um, there is, sorry, up here. There is revenue that is associated with this and for some reason it's not in that one. But Northern College in two thousand seventeen, um, the town did receive about fifteen hundred dollars worth in revenue. Two thousand eighteen was about nine hundred dollars. And so far in two thousand and nineteen, it's about two hundred and sixty dollars that we received. For Kirkland District Hospital, two thousand seventeen was, uh, three hundred dollars. Two thousand eighteen was about seven hundred and seventy dollars. And so far this year, there are, there is not any revenue. So what happens with this is that the, the facilities themselves do purchase the tickets. It's just the, the town bylaw enforcement contractor will enforce them. So those do come back as bylaws.
Any comments or discussions? Okay. Ashley Billardal, manager of planning and land development?
Yes, this report is concerning a request to purchase of four Government Road Wests. The property immediately adjacent to the park lane. Uh, their request is a, is to pay thirty-five hundred dollars plus all legal fees, our, our own and theirs, um, associated with the purchase. Um, the only issue that we seem to run into with the sale of this property was that the fence for the hundredth anniversary committee was recently installed. Uh, it was donated and has resulted in no expenses to the town. Uh, however, it is the intent of the hundredth anniversary committee to relocate it and the mural on a different property. So we're ensuring in that, um, if, if we were to proceed, the purchase and sale agreement would reflect that those two items do not form part of the sale to the purchaser. Is there any questions?
If this, if this stimulates them to fix that building, I'd be in favor giving it to them for nothing. But that is such an eyesore.
Yeah, the intent is for it to be used for parking and access into the building.
Thank you.
Ashley, the, um, the one concern I have is whether this, uh, these purchasers do go ahead with the project and we give them that lot. Is there any way of having some restrictions on that purchase? I don't know if that's possible, but...
You mean like timeframes to have something completed? Like, we've, we've done those in the past with previous council. We've had timeframes or two-year timeframes where if nothing's done with the property, we can take it back at the same cost? There's never, there hasn't been any interest in this property at all?
No, it's not the most marketable piece of property. It's very limited as usage, I agree.
Access to it too. I mean, if you were to build something to the rear axis onto that would be tough to do while meeting all of the requirements for ODSP or ODPS, I'm gonna get that wrong. Too many acronyms in my world. Uh, between Duncan and Prospect to make sure that you have a new way to get into that property that's compliant with both intersections will be difficult from an engineering standpoint. So it's, there's the laneway.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I was gonna say, there is the laneway in between. I'm not sure, does that laneway dead-end?
Nope.
And where does it come out?
It goes right, uh, through to Okeitire.
Okeitire, yeah.
Yeah, but does it dead-end at Okeitire?
Uh, it would go, it would be at the road allowance for, is that Prospect, right? Yeah. So just north, you can see there's like, it goes right to the road allowance.
Yeah, so...
Is it not fenced off now?
No.
No?
So there is an existing laneway where they could take deliveries and ship things out. Um, I really don't have any, yeah, I have concerns of whether or not, what's gonna happen with that property, but I don't really have any concerns with the sale itself.
Councillor White?
Sorry, just on a, a note of that, um, laneway, uh, when I went to look down at the property, it might be worth Public Works, um, checking out that sign, please.
The laneway sign?
The one-way sign?
The one-way sign?
It no longer says one-way. Says something cute.
Any further discussion on that one? That'll be coming back as a bylaw. Any further discussion on that one? That'll be coming back as a bylaw.
The second report I have is, it's an agreement that we've had in place, a contract that we've had in place, however, when we, we looked at the actual documentation, whether or not it had come to council for approval, nothing was signed. So this is 2009, it predates me. It looks like all of the direction was provided to go ahead and get into a contract with them, but there was no, nothing signed that are authorizing the signature of the contract. So this contract, we've been abiding by the terms within that contract for the last ten years. And it's, it's in relation to our GIS software, so it's, it's basically a database that allows us to fulfill activity requests, look at aerial imagery, lot line, very, very rough lot lines, be able to visually see the zoning bylaw, building permits are issued on this system, economic development plays a significant role in here as well. We have a lot of plans for our GIS system that we plan on integrating, the community improvement plan will be one of them as well. We also look, or also have all our streetlights, traffic signs, parks and trails, roads, and water sewer and storm sanitary services mapped out on this. So it's a, it's a really good database for everything and it's great for visually looking at, so I'm sure, I think some of you have seen the CGIS system. The costs associated with it, we've been paying roughly seventeen thousand dollars annually. We did have funding originally, it is now gone. We, we'd like to continue working with CGIS, the intent is not to sit here and debate whether or not we do it, it's just to formalize the contract, more or less. That wasn't signed when we originally set this up.
Councillor White?
Sorry, I won't pretend I didn't have major issues with being handed a decade-old contract with no good information to back it up. Joanne was just excellent with me and she, she forwarded me everything she could. Not only that, I did contact E4M and ask like, how often does this occur? And Peggy was very good with me as well and told me that I would be absolutely surprised at the amount of time, contracts like this, especially back in the early nineties, your handshake was as good as gold and so contracts often were not signed. So actually after Joanne and after Peggy, I'd be more comfortable doing a brand-new one, starting in 2019 with the contract end date and, and like a fee schedule, really love that in best-case scenario, but I have investigated that it is just a housekeeping issue that, to sign a contract.
Councillor Owens?
Yeah, I'm not arguing the value of the CGIS system. It's an excellent system and I'm sure it saves us seventeen thousand dollars a year in labor time, but I would like to see the details of the contract before I vote on it. Like, how much is it next year? How much is it the year after? How long's the contract for? Are there other providers of similar service? That information I don't have as a councillor. So I would have trouble spending ratepayers' money not knowing the details. And so it's not that I'm against the CGIS system, I think it happens to be a very good system and a very useful system, but without seeing the details of the contract, I, I can't sign a blank check, a blank check. You know, I need to see the details before I spend ratepayers' money.
So the contract was attached to the, to the report, the, the way the contract works, it's, it's ongoing and we have a thirty-day cancellation, so we do have the ability to cancel at any time. The data that we provide to CGIS is ours, so if we cancel within thirty days, we pay them, we get all of our, all of our information, we can throw it into a new platform if necessary. I should also mention that it did go through procurement process back in 2009, so it would have, it would have been the overarching city of Timmins doing the procurement as a whole. So it was originally set up with a, a bunch of different municipalities in northeastern Ontario working together and they did the procurement and CGIS was the lowest bidder at the time. So majority of those individuals that were working in there did proceed with CGIS as the, as the preferred client. So there's many municipalities working with CGIS. Timmins, I know Timmins, I know Huntsville, I know, there's, there's quite a few.
It, it is easy enough for us to, to go back to CGIS and say, "We are doing a house cleaning and that we would like to have a schedule of fees." And we, we can apply the normal terminology that we use with contracts now to it. I don't think that there's any issue with it. Their issue would be, what, are you leaving us right now? That's not the intent. The intent is to clean it up and I think that we could do that with them and bring that back to council. Right now, we, I think that we would ask council direction to, to, to tell us to do that.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, like I said, I, I don't have a problem with the system and I believe the system saves us probably as much money as what we're spending, you know? And I've been over there and had things called up where we could see the rough property lines and stuff and from that perspective, it's very handy, especially with ratepayers who, you know, maybe have a dispute with their neighbor or, or want, you know, it's, or they want to buy a laneway or whatever, they can visually see it, it's a lot easier to deal with. And I apologize to Ashley if I missed the details in here.
It's attached to the schedule.
I may have got bogged down in, because other things you mentioned, I remember reading, so I apologize to you for that. But yeah, I think going forward, if we can get everything laid out in black and white, it would just sit better with me.
Ashley, is it, am I correct in saying that we can opt out of this at any time without any penalties?
Yeah, you're correct.
Thirty, yeah. To have a resolution to defer and get the additional contract in, in place or clarifications?
I would suggest this for the public record that we say we're updating the contract to modern, current terms and terminology. To current terms and terminology. Or to common terms and terminology, sorry. Yeah, I did. You know how I write, it's going to change every time I touch a paper, but yeah.
So it's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White, that staff bring back an updated current agreement between the town of Kirkland Lake and CGIS with detailed information to common terms and terminology and that bylaw nineteen dash oh eight six be deferred.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous? Director of care, Nancy Fogear?
Hi, everyone. So unfortunately, our compressor went in the tech servery air conditioner mid-July. It has been replaced as it was a health and safety risk, the staff working in that area were working in thirty-plus degree temperatures. I guess the good thing is, is that our HVAC that had been approved for the 2019 budget came in under budget by thirty-seven hundred plus dollars, leaving the cost of the replacement air conditioning unit at just over twelve hundred dollars. What we're suggesting is that council approve using unspent dollars from the bathroom renovation from, from this building to cover that expense so that there's no cost to the taxpayers.
Any questions? None noted?
The motion that's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Rick Owen, the council approves the four thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and three cent amendment to the 2019 capital budget for the replacement of the air conditioning unit in the tech servery and that this amount be funded by utilizing three thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents from unspent funds from the 2019 HVAC unit project and that one thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-three spent cents from the unspent funds from the 2018-2019 council chamber accessible washroom project.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous? Thank you, Nancy. You're on.
Thank you. I'll give you a brief update on the portable toilet that was installed at the beginning of July at Kinross Park. So financially, there are daily costs for cleaning the toilet, it comes in at about thirty dollars plus taxes per cleaning. In consultation with the local health inspector from the Timiskin Health Unit, we installed a hand wash station so that people could clean their hands after use. We did put on a lock and we also have some overtime for locking it on the weekends because we do not have afternoon shifts seven days a week, we only have afternoon shifts four days a week. So the new costs for the portable toilet were just over two thousand dollars. We have regular costs of our staff locking and unlocking for the thirty-day period, this is budgeted dollars already with our operators, so this is not new dollars to be spent. So the total cost for the initial thirty-day period came in at just over three thousand dollars. If this was to be an ongoing service that council would like to see, there wouldn't be the hand wash station obviously and the lock on ongoing period. So if you were looking at doing this in 2020, it would be about twenty-five hundred dollars a month of, of dollars to be spent. So if you did it for four months, it's about ten thousand dollars, if you did it for six months, it's about fifteen thousand dollars cost for this service. This service came about because councillors and staff received requests to do this and council directed us to try a sixty-day trial period. It has gone without too many problems so far. We did have one resident concerned that she wasn't able to close the door properly. Our staff have checked it, I've checked it as well, the door does seem to be functioning properly. We did have some response from neighboring residents and they, depending on where they lived, they all had a preference that it was farther away from them, which is probably something you would expect. And at this point, what I would recommend is that I can come back after the sixty-day period if you'd like to give you another brief update and then you can decide what you'd like to do for the 2020 budget, whether you'd like to continue, whether you'd like to do it short-term, long-term, things like that.
Go ahead. I just wanted to also point out, this was a temporary use, so it was put up for that purposes. When, during the debate, Bonnie had made a good point, if it is a permanent fixture there, then under the act, we are adding an amenity and we should be going through a proper consultation process with both the public and representatives of disabled community. We would need signage indicating where the location is and given the cost, perhaps it would be better to consider an alternative like an actual fixture at that point, just saying that. So in terms of, and this is a report for, just for your information purposes, but would strongly suggest that if there's any consideration given to continuing with this going forward, give us time to tell you what the costs, associated costs and requirements would be so you have better information. Because at that point, we would also be moving, there would be a capital cost to upgrading and putting the facility in and then it would be moving into Bonnie's operating costs to service it. So we'd like to give you a full scope for that in October.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I went over today to do an inspection and what I found is, it is not visible to any residential buildings that are there. There's a tree barrier between all the houses and the residences. I had a very long conversation, friendly conversation with one of the residents and he just didn't like it there, he just didn't want it. He didn't think it was needed, which, and he told me all, you know, his neighbors felt the same way, which didn't impress me. The only thing that sort of hit home was when he said, "Well, the cost is a factor." Okay, I, that I consider a legitimate concern. I asked him if it devalued his property, no. Did it cause many problems? No. They just didn't like it. Now, I have a number of questions. The cleaning of that, we contracted out, right?
Correct.
But we clean the splash park washroom with staff, right?
Correct.
So why can't the same staff clean that washroom as well?
We, we could clean, we just don't have the capacity to...
To pump out?
To pump.
Yeah. But my understanding is right now, we contracted out the cleaning, not the pumping out, but the actual cleaning.
Including pumping. So the cleaning includes, I, I did ask him what it all includes, so he pumps daily and cleans.
Okay. Now, the overtime to lock it, we lock the splash park every night, right?
Correct.
The washrooms, sorry.
Yes.
Well, I guess we lock the splash park too.
Yes.
Is it the same person locking, and we lock Civic every night, right?
Yes.
Is it the same person locking the splash park, Civic, and that washroom?
No.
Why couldn't the same person do all three?
So we have custodial staff that clean at physical services and then when they come from physical services to the community complex, they lock the splash park and Civic is locked at the end of the day by the activity coordinator. Or, or it depends on what day it is. So it's either activity coordinator or if we have an operator on, operator.
So the washrooms at the splash park are open until about nine o'clock at night, right?
Yes.
So why can't that person just go from there over to the washroom at, at the, at the Kinross Pond and lock it at the same time?
I do have one girl that walks, that is one of our custodial staff, so I would have to work on that.
But I mean, it would be a cost savings, it's, it's doable.
Doable, it would take away from their cleaning time, so we would just have to then compensate for that.
So we could reduce the costs of operating it.
Perhaps, I, I think I'd have to add on some cleaning time for them because they're tight, tight as it is, but it may, it wouldn't be an OT cost, so there'd be set, dollar-for-dollar salary, but we take away the time and a half, the half part of the time.
Yeah.
So we could get that down perhaps a bit.
I'm just looking for, I, I'm not sold on having it, I'm not sold on not having it. This was supposed to be, I believe it was a sixty-day trial, but I was expecting a report that was going to say, "Oh, there's been vandalism" or, you know, "People have complained of smell" or whatever, that was the kind of report that I figured we would be getting. When I got the report that we did get, then I started thinking, "Well, if we decided to go ahead with it, how could we look at cost savings?" And I think we can operate it for less money than what, I'm not saying that it will be easy or whatever, but we've got to look at cost savings with everything that we do. At least that's my opinion as a councillor, I don't know how the other councillors feel. Anyways, thanks for listening, Bonnie.
Councillor Avanov?
Bonnie, what about usage? How much does it get used? I know you can't look in the pot and say, "Well, there's somebody that ate in here."
I've looked in the pot.
Yeah, but if it, I'm just thinking, if it hasn't been used...
We haven't had any feedback that people are appreciating it or, other than the residents who felt that they just didn't want it in the area.
Yeah, I walk around there, I don't see anybody in there ever, but I'm not saying that it doesn't get used, maybe it does at three o'clock in the morning or something, but whatever.
It's locked now.
But if it's not being used, then is it, are we wasting our... But if it's not being used, then is it, are we wasting our?
We haven't heard anything about use, and I don't know how you'd monitor that.
Well, you can usually tell with bathroom tissue, or you can, you know, I know if he's cleaning it and pumping it, and he's doing this thing for thirty bucks a day, and he's not, and he's not having to clean very much, or not having to pump.
I can ask the question. I have not asked the contractor if he feels the uses.
The contractor could be making a fortune, well, not a fortune, but a bit of money just by doing nothing.
Yes.
Counselor White.
So my one concern is, we did budget three thousand eight hundred and fifty-four for twenty nineteen. We only have seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-four cents remaining. So will that actually cut down a lot of time that we can provide this for the?
To stay within those parameters, it would have to.
Yeah. So that might be something to think about. I don't know if we really necessarily want to tack on removing it from the parks and parkland reserve. I don't know if we want to draw more money just to get a few more days out of it. That's something to consider, because we did have a budget, a solid budget going in.
Right. From our perspective, it is, use up the budget that you have allocated, you've done your trial period, be finished it.
Counselor Owen.
And if we remove it during the walking season, and we don't get any complaints, people screaming at us, then we'll know it wasn't well used. I mean, it just makes sense. When you've got, have something there, and people are used to being, it being there, and they're using it, if you take it away, they're gonna let you know. And if they're not using it, we won't hear anything, and that could be another indicator as to how well it's used.
Counselor White.
Sorry, and just to move on, so our initial concerns when we were going through the debate was vandalism. Have you heard anything?
No.
Excellent, that's good news. How many emergency cleanings did it require?
Just one.
Okay. And any, unfortunately, any drug paraphernalia found?
Not that's been reported, and I think my staff would tell us right away. They're there twice a day, so.
Okay, because that was the biggest concern, one of the three biggest concerns when we were debating, so that's great, thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Yeah, pretty happy that we put a trial basis on this, follows change management, the Plan Do Assess Act. You have something, you assess and you act on it. So the feedback is, from the residents is sort of, they do have a point, but as Rick says, hasn't, they don't see it, it's just they don't like it because it's there. Same thing as windmills, not in my backyard, but we need more windmills, right? So for this as well, I wouldn't be too apt to spending more out of that fund, once it's done, I think it's done. And for use during the, during the homecoming, I had a picnic with my family there, I have a four-year-old daughter, and she needed to use the washroom, and we're having a picnic right near that part, and it was nice to be able to have that there, rather than a long walk to Tim Hortons, or picking a spot in the bush, so it was convenient for that moment, but, so.
I think we, when's the sixty day period up, Bonnie?
The sixty day period would be up, the money will run out before sixty days, put it that way. Yeah, the money is probably done now, because we've only received one bill from the contractor for cleaning, so I'd have to ask him to settle up with us where we are now, and I'm just suspecting, based on what I see, we're gonna be pretty much there.
But based on what Wolf was saying, if we look at, after the trial period, if we look at this on a more permanent basis, we can't continue to have this portage on, basically, as we meet the other standards.
No, I think that we can continue to have, but I think we have to go through a proper process for doing so under the Disability Act.
When you add an amenity to a parkland, it is recognized under the Accessibility Act, so you do have to do the consultation, you do have to do proper signage, so it's very clear in the act. Because it was trial, we weren't obliged to follow that, but this is an amenity to parkland, and parkland is recognized.
And I think that also, it comes into the access to the facility, the ramp, the markings, everything, so we want to make sure, that's why I was saying, let us price that out, let us scope that out, what that includes for you, because otherwise, we could be making a very false promise.
Personally, I thought it was going to be a sixty day trial, and as Counselor Adams noted during the centennial celebrations, it was ideal to have it for all the people coming, visitors coming to town. I'm still a bit on the fence on whether the long-term viability that makes sense or not. Having gone to Timmons, my daughter lives there, I believe it's Gillies Lake Park, it's much bigger than what we have, and they don't have any washroom facilities that I could find anyway, that seems to work. So I would like to have a follow-up report and recommendations. Counselor White.
So I do think we need to agree that once that money runs out, then unfortunately, we'll have to pull it, even though we didn't make the sixty day trial period, it's important that we stay on budget for this venture, until we get more input and feedback.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, I forgot, there was one other concern that the resident I talked to mentioned to me, and I think it's a legitimate concern, is that we made the decision to go ahead with the porta potty on the eighteenth of the month. The letter he received five or six, five days later, or whatever, was dated the nineteenth, and it was asking for input on a decision that we had already made. And I kinda agree with the resident, that that's not the way we should do it. We, with the value of hindsight, and I apologize to the residents of that neighborhood, because it's not, we're a new council, we're still learning, I don't know how long I can get away with that one, but nonetheless, we should have done it differently. We should have sought consulta, if we were going to seek consultation, we should have done it before council voted to put it there. This way, we kind of insulted the residents, I think, because we're, oh, we made the decision, but, oh, by the way, give us some feedback. But it doesn't matter, we've already made the decision to do a sixty day trial. So I think it's just something that we should note and keep in mind for future decisions.
Definitely, I agree, and I think we rushed it through because we're worried about all the visitors coming to town and having those facilities. Counselor White.
Sorry, I did have a point before you spoke, but I don't think we rushed it through. I think we had like four meetings about it. But what I do agree is, we need to get more proactive with decisions that are made at council chambers. We need to be more proactive through our department heads, they all sit with us. We do have social medias for most of our department. They could be assimilating the information through their websites, like anything we decide that they feel their specific audience or users would be interested in, they definitely should be able to put it out the next day, that, hey, this affects people that use the complex, this is what they've decided, this is museum, et cetera. I think they should have more freedom to just do a post and put it on Discover KL or their website.
I think also that with the new website, there will be the ability for council to engage directly with the public for feedback onto these matters as you're having your debates. And I think that that would be important, because people do want to speak to you, they don't want to necessarily speak to us. There's definitely a need for better coordination between our own departments. The potty did arrive and was set up, but Bonnie's crew was not notified. So that, that's ridiculous, and that has to be fixed, so we know that.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm old and I forget things. The other comment that I thought was, that this resident made, was that some neighbors got notified and others didn't. And I explained to him, well, we use a certain measurement, but, I mean, that measurement is a legal requirement when we're doing minor variances and stuff like that. But on this, which I consider more of a social issue or a neighborhood issue, I think we should expand that radius, not go by what legal requirements are for other things. I assume that's what happened, and that's what I explained to him, is that we use, there's a legal requirement, but I think in issues like this, we should expand rather over notify than under notify, so that one neighbor says, I got notified, the neighbor right next door says, oh, I didn't, right?
Yeah, I think again, that if we have that tied into the communications with council, we can probably take care of that easier. We wouldn't necessarily be going out by mail at that point anymore.
Joanne.
It's moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The staff remove the porta potty at Kinross Park after the budgeted funds have been spent, and that staff bring back a follow-up report with necessary regulations and costs for adding an amenity to a public park.
All in favor? Introduction reading and consideration of bylaws.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw nineteen dash zero seven eight, being a bylaw to establish procedures for public notice, and repealing bylaw oh seven dash one zero six, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw nineteen dash zero seven nine, being a bylaw to amend bylaw fifteen dash one two five, the town's procurement bylaw, be, by amending section thirteen, three dash one three one, being the manner of giving notice, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous.
It's moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw nineteen dash zero eight zero, being a bylaw to prohibit parking on private property without consent of owner, the Kirkland District Hospital, repealing bylaws fourteen dash zero seven five and fifteen dash zero nine eight, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous.
It's moved by Counselor Stacy, or Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw nineteen dash zero eight one, being a bylaw to amend the town's zoning bylaw, bylaw twelve dash zero one nine, to rezone thirty-six, thirty-eight Prospect Avenue to Town Center Commercial Special, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous, passed.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw nineteen dash zero eight two, being a bylaw to amend the town's zoning bylaw twelve dash zero one nine, to rezone five hundred Hayes Street to outdoor recreational commercial, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw nineteen dash zero eight three, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a two-year extension with Aqua to act as the operating authority for the Kirkland Lake water, wastewater, and distribution and collection systems, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw nineteen dash zero eight four, being a bylaw to prohibit parking on private property without consent of owner at Northern College, repealing bylaw oh eight oh six two, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw nineteen dash zero eight five, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of Fort Government Road West to two six eight nine six eight six Ontario Inc., be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous.
And bylaw nineteen dash oh eight six was CGIS, and that's been deferred.
All in favor?
Yep.
Sorry, sorry. Questions from councilor's staff? Counselor White, were you satisfied with the comments in the opening? Thank you. Notice of motions? None noted. Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw nineteen dash zero eight seven, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held August thirteenth, twenty nineteen, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Counselors' reports? Counselor Adams?
Yeah, so certainly with the third quarter water, residential flat water sewer invoices, there was certainly a lot of feedback about how much of an increase it was, and certainly, yes, we can say that we provided a heads-up on it, but certainly, there is quite a bit that missed that notice, and certainly was a shock. And so, a lot of the bills are due on the twentieth. Unfortunately, our next meeting isn't till September. I think it would be called upon, especially at the, under procedural bylaw, direction of the mayor, to call a special meeting to maybe waive the late fees with regards to the flat water, to help give people time to pay the bills. As stated earlier by one of the counselors, it is important to listen and get feedback, and make the appropriate changes according to the input of the ratepayer. They have spoken, and they're upset, and they're concerned about paying the bills. I don't think it's appropriate that we would charge the one percent on having such a huge increase.
How long of a period are you talking?
I can probably say sixty days. That's two months, that's without that one percent increases. That just gives enough time for people on the fixed incomes to maybe come together, because that's only two weeks, and if you're on a fixed income, that's pretty difficult to do.
Can you leave this with me, and we will discuss it with staff, and get back to council members? Get satisfied? Any other counselors' reports? Counselor White?
No, I was just gonna say, I agree with Patrick. I looked back into private, previous years, when council was late passing budget, the months that the bills were due were also switched, so it might be something worth looking into with staff. The interest, not moving of the date.
Yeah. But that's another idea.
Okay, we will bring that back to council. Counselor Owen and Counselor Casey Owens, did we not attend the Tech Pioneer?
Oh, yes, we did.
Yeah, barbecue, and I'll let you expand on that.
Sorry, Pat, when you get to my age, time, it's a long time, but, yeah. And Casey, I, we attended it, we enjoyed it. Dave Rogers was there, he just loves being there and entertaining for the seniors. We had, I had, and Casey had a lot of interaction with the residents there, but he seemed happy and content, and really enjoyed themselves, and I'm sure Casey could say some more.
Thanks for throwing me under the bus on that one. No, I, yeah, it was a good afternoon. I don't remember Dave Rogers being there, but I thought that was the one before that. That was the one before that, that was just, yeah, that was just a lunch. The lunch was very good, yeah, the food was good, and I was on vacation. I forgot, there was a two-year orange juice.
But actually, it was a staff volunteer, I should say, recognition, and Judy Zwankel was the, presented the volunteer of the year, so congratulations to Judy, and it was, was a very enjoyable.
But it is worth mentioning that they, they recognized her, but all, not just her, but all the volunteers, because without the volunteers, the TPR would not offer a level of services they do, or it wouldn't be the same quality of services or programming for the seniors there.
Counselor Owen.
In my defense, you used the word barbecue, and that's why I recalled the wrong event.
They called her the barbe-
But I, I tell you, I'm, I'm so glad that Judy was recognized. She gives so much to, not just the Tech Pioneer, but to the whole community, and she certainly lets us as counselors know. and she certainly lets us as councillors know what she thinks, which I appreciate. And she's done it for years and years and years. And it was nice to see her, and I think she was pretty embarrassed, actually. She was kind of...
Judy is usually not lost for words. She was.
But Judy also did something that I picked up on, and when she was complimenting the staff, when she was talking about the nursing staff, she also included PSWs, which are... provide a vital service. And usually, when people think of the nursing staff, they think of RPNs and RNs. And I thought it was really neat that Judy, as a nurse, recognized the PSWs for the work that they do to provide for the residents.
Thank you for coordinating that, Nancy Fogear. It's a great event, and where I'm glad we attended. I'm going to take about five minutes here. You will recall, May the twenty-fourth of this year, we lost our mayor, Bill Enoy, who served seven terms on council. Officially, we haven't, as a town or council, haven't recognized Bill. But I did receive an email from a party that wanted to recognize Bill. And with the permission of his family, I would like to read this, because I think it's very touching, and it means a lot in recognizing Bill for his efforts over the seven terms of council. And it's from Brian Hinchcliffe, CEO, former CEO of Kirkland Lake Gold, and from Harry Dobson, who was the Chair of Kirkland Lake Gold. And it was addressed to Linda and Drew, who were kind enough to share this with me and asked me if I wanted to share it with council and the public, and I'm very happy to do so. "After landing at Earleton, at a recent trip to Kirkland Lake, Karen and I learned that Bill had passed away within a day or two or so, and we were not able to see him. We were both terribly saddened. It is hard to put into words how important Bill was to resurrecting the mines of... and the town of Kirkland Lake, and how dependable was that relationship we had with him. I don't believe either of us had known how ill Bill was, and we can only hope that his suffering and pain was as minimal as it could have been. We returned to Kirkland Lake in the spring after an absence of a few years to see an enormous mine expansion that, all things being equal, will support the town's prosperity for another thirty years plus. Only Ray, Black, Harry, and myself know how singularly responsible Bill was for all these mining ac... this mining activity and the wealth the town has experienced. No, Bill, and none of Bill's willingness to learn, to listen to us, and ultimately trust us, the mines would be flooded today, and the town would be very different. And to Drew, during the two... the years 2001, 2005, your father stood up to an incredible criticism from everyone. The mining sector in Canada was dead, and everybody but... but everyone considered the Kirkland Lake mines to have been mined out. Hadn't the big boys, Barrick and Kinross, turned their backs on any finding more gold and closed down the mines? Further, a reputation that the mines could not be mined safely and taken hold of amongst Kirkland Lakers. Your father listened to us and considered the geol... geologic geologic views that Mike Sutton and others presented that could be another very rich deposit of the mine, the one that is being mined today. He was open to learning about our previous experiences in reopening the mines and our commitment to training and operating safely. He took great pride when, for a couple of years in a row, we won the award for the best safety record at Macassar for any mine in Ontario. As part of this, we fought... he fought with us to keep the mine safety building open in Kirkland Lake. Every once in a while, during those years, your dad must have been under great pressure. He'd call me, or Harry, or Ray, and ask, "What are you guys up to, X, Y, or Z?" Right? We would reassure him that that was enough, because we trust... he trusted us, and trusted him as a politician. Not one other national or provincial political politician supported us or even visited the mine site for what, the first ten years? You can ask Ray. We acquired the mine in 2001 because your father supported us from the beginning, and we started dewatering from the twenty-five-hundred-foot level as soon as possible. Were there to have been a six-month delay and another snow melt to have occurred, it would... it was game over. The mines flooded to surface would have been a death sentence. That's not all... that... life's not all about wealth creation, but it's important. Your father's decades of service on so many fronts testify to how well-rounded and principled he was. Many have commented on this, and it's great to see the foundation be established in his name. You were too young to remember Kirkland Lake in 2001, but the wealth creation that has taken place since then has been immense. The hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of payroll that was... that must be close to a billion-dollar Canadian dollars invested, if not more, in capital investments benefiting local and national suppliers. The massive, massive real estate appreciation and investment in town in the twenty or thirty kilometers circumference is another multi-hundred-million-dollar positive impact. Without Bill's intelligence and support, none of the above happens. In closing this letter, we will remember Bill not only supported us through the few ups and the many downs that accompany any huge effort like the reopening of deep-flooded mines, but Bill did so with much appreciated sense of humor. Best regards and assurance, condolences, Brian Hinchcliffe and Harry Dobson." This is very worthy of Bill's history at council in Kirkland Lake, and on behalf of council, I appreciate the family sharing this with us. It's very touching, so thank you for listening. Adjournment?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacey White. The council adjourns its regular meeting of August thirteenth, twenty nineteen, to an in-camera meeting pursuant to section two thirty-nine-two of the municipal act to discuss two potential and one... two potential sales issues, one potential issue of litigation, and one issue concerning an identifiable person.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous?